Call this meeting to order. Do we stand for the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I ask that we stand for a moment of silence for our head custodian, John Dillon, who recently passed, please. Thank you. Cheats? Adequate notice this meeting was advertised in Yasbury Park Plaza, Beacon on January 20, 2022 by posting a notice in the Fort Corver Post Office and a local harbor post office by filing a copy of the notice with the Lacy Township clerks required by the Open Public Meeting Act. Roll call for attendance, please.
Mr. Armato?
I'm here.
Mrs. Claus?
Here.
Mr. Peters?
Present.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Here.
Mrs. Downing?
Yeah, here.
Mr. Scanlon?
Here.
Mr. Polino?
Present.
Okay, for the executive session, whereas the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10:4, is designed to ensure that decision-making government bodies in the state conduct their business in public, except in specific circumstances where exclusion of the public is needed, in order to protect the privacy of individuals, the safety of the public, or the effectiveness of government in such areas as negotiations or investigations. And whereas, in such circumstances, a closed or executive session may be held without public notice or during the course of a public meeting, provided that the subject matter of the executive session is covered by the law. Therefore, be it resolved that an executive session be convened for the purpose of discussing confidential legal matters, including but not limited to the current caseload and confidential personnel matters. The subject matter of these discussions will be disclosed to the public when the reason for confidentiality subsides. The length of the executive session is estimated to be approximately 90 minutes. The board shall reconvene and proceed with business at 7:30 PM. Action may be taken. Motion?
Move.
Second.
Second motion.
All were in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, good evening. We're going to resume our meeting. So we're going to start with our student representatives. Welcome, Jimmy and Hannah. Welcome to the board. So whoever wants to start that in?
Hi, my name is Jimmy Tomriddel, and I am the senior class president.
Hi, I'm Hannah Miller. I'm the SGA Executive Board President.
Welcome.
So the freshman class advisor is Ms. Spanuzza, and she is located in the guidance office. Meetings are in W-108 after school. Freshman elections are ongoing. Voting will take place on Friday, September 23rd. Good luck to all freshman students running for a position.
Sophomore class news. The advisor is Ms. Taskin, and meetings are in the lecture hall.
Junior news. The advisor is Ms. DeJohn, and meetings are in A-104.
Senior class news. The advisor is Ms. Hoyt. The meetings are in A-107. Seniors are encouraged to check their school emails daily for upcoming events and announcements. Executive Board news. The advisor is Ms. York in W-108. Meetings are in the lecture hall, and members are instructed to check the SGA canvas for all meeting minutes and volunteer opportunities.
Upcoming opportunities to volunteer include: September 22nd is back-to-school night. To volunteer, students must wear lacy clothing and arrive at LTHS and report to W-108 by 6:00 PM. This event ends at 8:30 PM. October 4th is the new student breakfast. This event will take place in Cafeteria South at Lacy Township High School from 7:30 AM to 8:30 AM.
Homecoming news. The homecoming football game is October 14th against Brick Township. The homecoming dance is October 22nd. We have to wait for the last gymnastics meet, October 18th, before we can use the gym. Homecoming court. Nominations will be done via Google Form October 10th, and court voting will be done via Google Form October 12th. Admission. Paperwork will be emailed to students at the start of October. All fines, whether it be main office, media center, or cafeteria, must be paid before admission is sold. Prices and dates. From October 11th to the 13th, tickets will be sold for $25 in room W-108 after school. From October 18th to the 20th, tickets will be sold for $30 in room W-108 after school from 1:45 to 2:30. The next SGA meeting will be on Monday, October 3rd.
For September 2022, Zach Brewer has been selected as this month's unsung hero. Zach can be seen coming into school every day with his radiant and outgoing personality. Zach uses his kind-hearted nature and a wonderful personality to build connections with classmates and faculty alike. Zach would be described by his peers as extremely kind, intelligent, and someone who is just great to be around. Outside of the classroom, Zach Brewer is a varsity athlete on a Lacy Lions football and lacrosse team. He is also an active member in extracurricular activities such as NHS and helps coach a youth football team. His ability to brighten people's days on and off the field is why Zach Brewer has been selected as September's unsung hero.
Unfortunately, Zach... Oh, unfortunately, Zach Brewer cannot make it tonight, so we are still recognizing him. And that's all for the student representatives.
Thank you, Jimmy and Hannah. Appreciate it. Okay, so we're going to move on. So report of the superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Polino. And so I formally want to welcome everybody to the September Board Meeting, but I also want to formally welcome Hannah and Jimmy. We're going to be spending the next 10 months together, and we really enjoy having our students be part of us here up on the dais. Zach Brewer cannot be here. We'll make sure that he gets his plaque, and so congratulations to him and his parents. Definitely deserves another round of applause. Before I begin my comments tonight, and we did this earlier, I do want to have a moment of silence for Mr. John Dillon, who recently passed away. John was our head custodian here at the high school, and he is going to be missed, so a moment of silence for John. Thank you. Okay, so, hard to believe, but here we are, start of school. And even though it was a rainy day on our first day of school, I think that it went off without a hitch. Big kudos to Maria Valiente, our transportation coordinator, her entire team. So I don't remember a rainy day for the first day of school in a long time, and yet we got all of our students delivered safely and dismissed safely as well, so big kudos to her. Mr. Zalinski, Ms. Sylvia, and I did visit all of the staff orientations on September 1st, and it was just amazing and refreshing to see all of our students and our teachers back in the classrooms. Also on September 1st, our board members did a facilities tour of all six of our school buildings, and they got to see some of the projects that were going on, some of the classrooms that were ready to go, and they had great things to say about what they saw, not that I want to speak for you, and lots of compliments to John Smith, who's our facilities manager, and his team for getting us here and getting us ready. So big kudos and a good shout out to John Smith and his team. All right, so we haven't done this in a while because of summer, so we're going to transition, and I want to welcome Mr. Jason King to his very first board meeting as Lacy Township High School principal, to welcome our seniors of the month. In addition to seniors of the month, I believe we have a few Eagle Scouts we're going to recognize today, right?
Yes, we do. Yeah, we have quite a docket of awards to give out this evening, so it's wonderful.
And we have videos?
Excuse me?
Videos, right?
Yes, we have videos as well, so that's what we're going to start with. We are going to start with the Students of the Month. Each month, students are recognized and recommended to the main office for selection. We go through their qualifications and a variety of levels to pick the winners for each month. It's not just academic, it's also things they're involved in outside of school, inside of school. It's sort of the epitome of a well-rounded student. So our first winner this month is Sophia Reed. Sophia, come on down. As she brings her way down here, please, a round of applause for her family who are in attendance this evening. She needs to stand next to me for a moment, it's awkward, yeah, it's a whole lot of fun, it's good. We're going to watch a short video about Sophia at this time and some of her accomplishments. Hello, I'm Jason King, Principal of Lacy Township High School. We're here to celebrate our seniors of the month for September. Our first senior of the month is Sophia Reed. Here's a short video of her accomplishments.
Hi, my name's Sophia Reed, and I'm proud to be named September's Senior of the Month at Lacy Township High School.
Well deserved, Sophia. Sophia has been a wonderful, wonderful Spanish student since the middle school years.
I'm a member of the Lacy Township women's soccer team, as well as the indoor and outdoor track teams in the winter and the spring. I'm a member of the SGA, and I'm also an officer, and I participate in other clubs such as ADA, DECA, Interact, FBLA, NHS, and some more.
When I think back on class last year, I think that not often I have the opportunity to work with a student who's so dedicated to education.
Outside of school, I spend most of my time working or spending time with my family and friends.
She's always trying to help. She's always trying to work in groups with those kids who need help.
My favorite high school memory would definitely have to be winning the South Jersey Group Three State Sectional with my soccer team last year.
I remember at one point you thanking me for pushing you so hard, but to be honest, that was all you. That impressive AP test score was because of your hard work and discipline, because of that extraordinary effort that you put forth.
In the future, I plan on attending a four-year university, but I'm unsure of what I want to do with my future.
Congratulations, Sophia, again, and I'm pretty sure you're going to be successful in life because you are an achiever. That's what you are. An excellent, excellent student in the academic field and a person.
All right, our next student of the month is Jared Danko. Jared, come on down. His families and families as well, so a round of applause for them. All right, we'll watch a short video about Jared's accomplishments. Congratulations, Sophia. Here we are, celebrating our next senior of the month, Jared Danko.
Hi, my name's Jared Danko, and I'm proud to be announced as September's Senior of the Month for Lacy Township High School.
You know, over the years since your freshman year in STEM, I've watched you grow, not only as a student, but also as an individual. A person in the classroom working as hard as you do every single day is a skill that everyone should aspire for.
So at Lacy Township High School, I'm a part of three sports, with those being the varsity soccer team, and varsity winter track and spring track, and I'm also involved in many clubs such as SGA, where I'm the executive treasurer, Interact, NHS, where I am the chairman of the COPE course that will be coming to the high school. I am also the president of DECA, involved in FBLA, and I am also involved in the physics club here at the high school.
Jared, you've always had a great sense of humor, but you also have this real serious side to you that I think has made you very successful in my classroom. You've always been a standout in the STEM Academy since day one.
So outside of the high school, I really enjoyed doing things in the outdoors, that's physical activity, playing sports, or going hiking or camping, they're all things I really enjoy, just being in the outdoors, especially when I get to do it with friends and family, people that I cherish the most.
You know, I remember last year doing competitive presentations, you were the person who really took some of those photos in stride, and it's being able to laugh at yourself that becomes an extreme skill, and I'm unbelievably proud to be your teacher.
My freshman year was being able to go to DECA state finals and be able to compete in that competition, and it was really a great opportunity for a three-day experience, be there with a bunch of people I wasn't really familiar with, but I became really great friends with them, and got to stay there at Atlantic City and compete in this competition, which I ended up doing very well in.
Jared, you always take great pride in all your work and responsibilities, and I know you're going to make this the best school year. You're definitely the greatest thing about Lacy Township High School.
So after high school, I do plan on attending a four-year college. Where that will be is still up in the air, but I do have a lot of schools in mind, and I plan on studying mechanical engineering, or possibly a minor in computer software engineering, where I can really put my two ideas of mechanics and how things work, but bring it more to the technological side, which I do really enjoy, computers and how they operate and work, and put those two together and do something that I'd really enjoy working on in the future.
Jared, September Student of the Month. Best of luck for the rest of the school year, and I know you're going to make a great decision on where to go.
Our final student of the month is the Ocean County Vocational Technical School Student of the Month, Daniela Matteo. Daniela, come on down. A round of applause for her families here as well. And we're going to watch a short video about her accomplishments. Congratulations, Jared, on your accomplishments. Our last senior of the month is Ocean County Vocational Technical School Senior of the Month, Daniela Matteo.
Hi, I'm Daniela Matteo, and I'm proud to be named September's Senior of the Month for Lacy Township High School.
Daniela's a fantastic student. Mostly got to experience her presence in a classroom in a US History II setting. She was a fantastic leader in class. She helped other students when they needed.
Outside of Lacy Township, I'm a dancer at Grace Emotion.
Everything, and I kid you not, every little assignment that she did was on point, perfect, creative.
My favorite memories here at Lacy Township High School are pep rallies, student dances, and games.
All the interactions I've had with her, and watching her interact with her peers, she's kind, she's caring, she's willing to stand up for kids.
I know that you're studying to be a nurse, and you will be a spectacular nurse, like beyond spectacular. I think you should be my nurse when I'm older.
After high school, I plan on going to college to get my bachelor's degree in nursing.
I know that your family is super, super proud of you, and enjoy this night.
And one more time, sincere congratulations to our September Students of the Month. Our next award for this evening is sort of a special award. It's the Eagle Scout Award. It's students who have achieved Eagle Scout and their troops have worked very hard, pretty much their entire youth lives, to get to this point. Just to show you exactly what it takes to become an Eagle Scout, I have the seven steps they need to accomplish to become a recognized Eagle Scout. First, they must be inactive in their troop for at least six months as a Life Scout, which is a higher level of scout, obviously. As a Life Scout, they must demonstrate scout spirit by living the scout oath and scout law. They must own a total of 21 merit badges, including these 13. A badge in first aid, citizenship in the community, citizenship in the nation, citizenship in the world, communication, cooking, personal fitness, emergency preparedness or lifesaving, environmental science or sustainability, personal management, swimming or hiking or cycling, camping, and family life. So again, they have to accomplish all these, plus other badges that they find interest in. They also have to, while being a Life Scout, serve actively in your troop for six months in a position of responsibility. While a Life Scout, plan, develop, and give leadership to others in a service project helpful to any religious institution, any school, or your community. We'll talk briefly about what they did for our community in a moment. While a Life Scout, participate in a Scout Master Conference. And finally, and ultimately, they must successfully complete their board review for the Eagle Scout rank. So again, once they accomplish all these things, they still must go in front of the troop and be nominated and be accepted as an Eagle Scout. This is not an easy task. It takes a lot of commitment and dedication to make it all the way through the entire process. So this evening, in an amazement of huge numbers here, we have four. We're recognizing four Eagle Scouts, and I'm hearing there may be a few more in a couple of months as well, so this might be an award we win, and we mentioned I'll be back for some more. So our first Eagle Scout is Jonathan Collins. Jonathan, come on down. A round of applause for his family and friends who are here this evening. Come on up, Jonathan. All right. For Jonathan's project, he chose to establish a United States flag retirement drop-off box in Lacy Township. So when a flag is to be retired, it cannot be disposed of haphazardly, it must be dropped off and taken care of in the honor that it deserves. So again, Jonathan, congratulations. Nice job. Our next Eagle Scout, Sean Collins. Sean, come on down. Keep the applause going for his family and friends. Sean? All right, for Sean's project, Sean raised funds to purchase a communication board for non-verbal children. He also helped install the board at Cedar Creek School Playground. So again, always thinking of others, always helping of others, it's one of the core foundations of the Scouts, and especially to obtain an Eagle Scout. So Sean, nice job. Congratulations. Our next Eagle Scout to be recognized is a name you may have heard just recently. It's Jared Danko. I don't know if Mr. Danko is still here. Jared, come on down. No, he is still here. Good. His family is still here, still here. Jared proudly created a gazebo and patio garden at the Village Lutheran Church for his project. So again, amazing job, enjoyed by many, so these are the kind of projects that the Eagle Scouts have to accomplish to obtain their rank. So Jared, nice job. Our final Eagle Scout this evening, Austin Van Zandt. Austin, come on down. A round of applause for his family. Well, who are here? Austin's accomplishment, Austin's project, was to create cubbies for the students of Little Los Angeles Preschool and trashcan enclosures at the Village Lutheran Church. So again, community project for schools and the township and religious organizations, a great thing for all the town and all to enjoy. So Austin, nice job. Dr. Prair, Mr. Zalinski, Board of Education, that concludes my portion of the evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. King, and congratulations to Jonathan, Sean, Jared, Austin. Jared for Senior of the Month, Sophia and Daniela, great stuff, great way to start off the school year, so congratulations, another round of applause. All right, so we haven't had our Lacy Minute in two months, and I spoke with Mr. Merman this past week, and he was a little concerned that he didn't have enough footage, but Mr. Zalinski and I were able to get him some material, so we're going to roll Lacy Minute. I'm sorry, there is another video. You ready?
Lacy Minute, sorry.
Lacy Minute. All right, so thanks again, Mr. Merman, for putting that together, and like I say every month, encouraging our staff members to send Mr. Merman some footage, great things that are going on in your classrooms, the hallways, cafeteria, the gymnasiums, the athletic fields, get it all to him so we can create the October Lacy Minute. Okay, I'm going to shift gears again and talk about health standards. So I want to begin by thanking everyone who came to the Listen and Learn on August 25th. We certainly learned, but more importantly, we listened. So since the Listen and Learn forum, we have made significant, significant revisions to the health curriculum. And in a few minutes, Mr. Zalinski is going to provide an overview of the updated curriculum. Specifically, he's going to review the student learning objectives for each unit in grades two, five, and eight. And in doing so, he is going to illustrate exactly what students will be learning while in class. Before he does that, I do want to thank the Board of Education for their countless, and I mean countless, hours discussing, researching, and revising the health curriculum. Just this past week, every single one of you have been into the board office so that we can collaboratively work on this together with the feedback that we received from the community during that Listen and Learn. But in addition to the Listen and Learn, the phone calls, the emails, we've tried to respond to all of them, if not most of them. And certainly, if we didn't get to you, please don't hesitate to give Mr. Zalinski or me a call. We would be happy to clarify, illustrate, discuss, any questions that anybody has. This work isn't easy, but collaboratively, we were able to arrive at the curriculum that we have today, that will be board-approved tonight. So we understand and we respect how everybody feels, and even though we are going to be adopting that curriculum, you know, we respect the fact that there are still going to be families that are not okay with it, and that's okay. And again, we respect that. And so that's why the principals are collectively working on alternate instruction for those families who wish to opt out. In the meantime, I hope that families take the opportunity to revisit the website where we house the curriculum and take a hard look at the revisions that were made. Again, Mr. Zalinski is going to provide an overview, but he's not going to get into the depth of it that you can when you go into Rubicon Atlas on our website. So once again, thank you to the Board of Education, thank you to our families who provided that feedback, and Mr. Zalinski is ready to present.
Pause, Tom puts me on the screen, we will move on. Any students who want to leave at homework? You are free to go. Advance. Don't have to listen to me, because so far the meeting has been out.
Oh, yeah, no, he's going to do it. Yeah. Congrats, congratulations.
Congratulations, Mr. Reed. Good job, thank you.
Yeah, good job. Good job. Looking forward to next month.
Listen, listen. At the awards, I saw you smile.
Very good.
I saw you smile. I saw you smile. What is super important to know this evening is that we've spent a lot of time back in our Rubicon Atlas. I know I've spoken to many of you, you've been in there. We are the most transparent school district in all of Ocean County, if not all of New Jersey, when you look at our curriculum website. All right, we post everything, everything, including the standards, the resources, what our teachers are doing, vocabulary in some cases. The only thing you don't see is individual lesson plans. We are actively working on plans with our health teachers in the K to 8 grades. We're in Google Classroom. You'll be able to look in Google Classroom on a weekly basis, and you can actually drill down exactly what your students will, your children will be seeing in those classes. So let's rewind.
That's K through 8.
Okay? K through 8 does Google Classroom. High school is Canvas. We don't give parents access to the Canvas, they have to ask their kids to see it. Okay? Because Canvas is a very college-oriented program, and we keep it that way. We keep those kids college-thinking. All right? So high school's different. But K to 8, Google Classroom, we're working on it, it's not there yet. The health teachers are kind of tuning up how they're gonna present, how they're gonna go through it, but we're, it's kind of something, we're sitting there around this week going, you know, people are asking to see lesson plans. We can't show individual lesson plans, but Google Classroom will give you that, really a decent window into what a teacher's doing, and we're working with the health teachers to kind of script that. Okay? So you'll see probably the same Google Classroom template in the K to fours, and then of course five, six, and seven, eight would be a little bit different based on what's going on. So we're really, again, kind of back to the transparency that we're trying to achieve. We know it's never 100%, but along those lines, let's go back to the tutorial. Standards are given to us by the state of New Jersey. We write the curriculum, teachers write the lesson plans. Okay? The curriculum is a reflection, it's a reflection of community, it's a reflection of the bosses, be it in this case, the, the teachers, then the administrators, then the upper administrators, then of course, the Board of Education, and then of course, the feedback that we got in a lot of different places. Dr. Pereira highlighted that, we talked about emails, we talked about our Listen and Learn, we talked about a couple of different places, and also, we are very astute, at least I'm very astute, at listening to the state as a whole. Okay? I watch, meet Governor Murphy, I watch, meet the Commissioner, I watch all those things to make sure that I'm in tune to what's going on all over the place when we do curriculum, which is a very challenging process. We wrote about 160 individual curriculums. That means we wrote 160 courses all over again. So it's no easy task. We started this over a year ago, we started actively writing in January, and then of course, we're gonna end up tonight with all those curriculums being approved, hopefully by the Board of Education. So what I really wanted to note is that when you look at our curriculum, I asked that parents kind of block out the standards. Everything else, we wrote. When you see numbers and 2.5 and 8.5, the state gave us that. Then we sat down and we write what we think is appropriate in all curriculums, whether it's U.S. History, whether it's Biology, whether it's Health. So in this case, with much more activity, much more parent input, much more Board of Education input, and we actively sat with every single board member over the last two weeks, pointing at the curriculum. Okay, Regina goes, wow, Mr. Shenze goes, wow, because she knows the process, she knows sitting in the boardroom, she knows that, you know, it's laborious. And we did a lot of that this week, okay? Ended up with today where I actually told Dr. Pereira, I'm exhausted, I don't think I can make the meeting, and she said, if you don't come to the meeting, I'm fired. So I'm here. All right. So quick, and I'm gonna post this, remember, when you look at our curriculums, you're really interested in three things, the student learning objectives, the essential questions, and the enduring understandings. What I'm gonna show you tonight are the highlights of Grade 2, Grade 5, Grade 8, and the student learning objectives, where the teacher goes first to plan their lessons for that unit. The first place the teacher goes, and really, it's the last place they go. We do understanding by design in Lacey Township. We design backwards. We say, this is where we want to be, and this is where we're gonna construct to get to where we want to be. We always look at the end result first. So the student learning objective is where we want them to be at the end of the lesson. Okay? So move on, Grade 2 Health. I am moving quickly because I will post this. Every unit is in this. I didn't do it for all grades, it's just too much. It, it is there, but I want to give you like a way to look at things as parents are going through there, and there may be some people at home when they watch the video, to kind of get through this. Grade 2, and I'm only really gonna give you the first bullets here as I go through them, but this, really, the only way I can describe this is it's about the whole person throughout the entire curriculum. Yes, there's some language, yes, there's some vocabulary, yes, there's a lot of things, but you have to understand, our community is very soft about presentation. We don't want it to be so harsh, we don't want it to be out of their comfort zone, we don't want it to be certain things. So when we talk about personal safety and wellness, students will learn to demonstrate personal habits and behaviors that contribute to a safe and healthy environment and lifestyle. Really gives you an overarching where we're going with that unit. Life skills and character education, students will learn them and explain the meaning of character, how and how to build healthy relationships. So those overarching student learning objectives are supported by essential questions, by enduring understandings, but they're all based here. So those who may not like what the state gave us, the only assurance I can give you is that we spent a lot of time looking at that, picking it apart, and trying to get there where all of the input brought us. So that's where we are. Moving on.
I'm sorry, I just have a quick question.
Just let me finish, and then I'll go back to the slides, I'll go, I'll back up for you, okay? Family life and community, students will learn to understand how families vary in size and dynamics, so, you know, you really get into it, because kids ask those questions in Grade 2. Hygiene and dental care, please brush your teeth. Okay? It's, it's not a joke, and they'll, they'll physically bring in the woman from the Health Department who brings all the toothbrushes and shows them, physically, shows them how they're supposed to do it. That's how deep we get with those, those things that some of us take for granted. Nutrition and fitness, and of course, what you'll see throughout our curriculums is bullying awareness and conflict. You'll see it everywhere. Okay? Throughout K to 12. Students will learn and understand the physical, social, emotional, and intellectual dimensions of health and wellness. So you might think, oh, we're just gonna say bullying's wrong? No, we really give them background, we give them about themselves, we talk about those different things that will provide them with the tools not to be a bully or not to be bullied. Very important to us. And then you'll see drug awareness throughout. Very soft in Grade 2. Learn how to demonstrate healthy habits. Not about drugs right there, it's about healthy habits. Okay? All right? Students will learn and recognize that some people might have difficulties. They might see their parents, they might see their relatives, they might see their friends, they may even see houses that they go over where something is there, and they'll like be able to identify a liquor bottle, or they'll be able to identify a pill on the ground. Very important stuff. Grade 5 Health. Personal growth and wellness. Okay, here's our, here's our puberty. All right, Grade 5, Grade 6, you gotta pick a year, it's gonna happen. All right, state picked Grade 5. Actually, they picked up to Grade 5, we removed all of it from Grades K to 4. It only appears starting in Grade 5. Milpon, Grade 5. I get it, they're elementary, okay, elementary, 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 but you gotta pick a year? Here we are. Okay, it's Grade 5. It's, but again, when you talk about the soft pedal approach of our health teachers, I assure you, and I just had them in the office just underneath this, this complex here, they look at me and go, we ain't doing that. All right? We're gonna make sure that it's age-appropriate, it's the right time and the right place. Social, emotional, we'll learn how to explain our feelings and impact our relationship with others. Again, the bullying, super important to us. All right? Get into something like nutrition. Okay? You're gonna do the, I'm gonna say four food groups, but it's the food tree now, right? Pyramid, it's the food pyramid. I've learned more about health in the last six months than I ever knew. Drugs and medicine again, and of course, linked to decision-making. Okay? Students learning to set personal, school, and family goals. Okay, Grade 8. Sexuality in relationships, here we go. The only way I can approach Grade 8 into Grade 9 is the fact that, that, and I'll say it like this, and I'm gonna, I don't usually do this, but being the father of children, by the time they get to high school, most parents are like, you're in high school. So we've always thought, here in Lacey, that they've got to be armed and ready for high school. That includes that you've got a 14-year-old, I'm gonna say it like this, because I have daughters and sons, 14-year-old girl with an 18 or 19-year-old boy in this high school. They've got to be armed with information, they've got to be armed and be able to protect themselves. That's where you get this. There has to be a point, and this is where it is. Okay? So the sex discussions start to happen, it's very soft. Okay? It's really about what are your questions, along with vocabulary, not the how-to guide that everybody in certain news media outlets will lead you to believe. Not here. So remember, keep the standards off to the side, remember who we are, and that's super important. I've been here 20 years, all right? I know who I am, and I know that Lacey has treated me well. So the give-back is that we make sure that everybody's taken care of, everybody's taken care of. Sex and contraception. Okay? Sexual activity, whether you like it or not, is coming. Hopefully, when they're 18 and older, but it doesn't always happen that way. Okay? There were incidents in Lacey, and you can remember them, back in the 90s. Some people are shaking their heads, they remember very well, because somebody didn't speak up, somebody didn't say something. Okay? Or didn't ask for help, or didn't know how to ask for help in their sophomore and junior year of high school. Into STDs. Can't learn about STDs without knowing how to get an STD. Again, it's not a how-to guide, but it's about the definitions, it's about places that it can occur, it can occur, excuse me. Alcohol, tobacco, and drugs, pretty self-explanatory. And then personal safety, risky behaviors. All right? Goes from sexually risky behaviors to physically risky behaviors to emotionally risky behaviors. All things that can affect you in your entire life. You go into the big house, high school's coming. And it is the big house, Jay's chicken is in there now. You just got here too, I know. Yeah. All right? All right. Questions? Miss Lydow.
So the state had their recommendations, and then working backwards...
What do you mean by recommendations? The standards?
Standards.
Yeah.
The state had their standards, you, the board, came up with the end result, which is this outline, and then this outline is gonna be presented to the health teachers who will come up with their own curriculum?
Nope. Nope, that's where you went off. So this is the curriculum. So when you build a lesson plan off of curriculum, okay, it becomes that, what they like to say is now it's the art of teaching. So you have overarching elements. Now I gotta teach it. So the teachers then teach it.
So the teachers are developing a lesson plan, I was using the wrong word.
Correct.
The teachers on their own to develop a lesson plan.
Out with the approval of their supervisor. All of them have to have their lesson plans approved.
The lesson plan has to get approved by their supervisor before they can present to a trial.
Correct. Correct. Every two weeks, they submit their lesson plans, they have to be approved with a check mark before they can teach that lesson.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, please.
Has the question of vocabulary been taken out of the eighth grade?
There's lots of vocabulary. Okay? We have removed some, we have added some. Okay? I didn't include it here. All right? So that's, again, somebody who wants, concerned with the eighth grade, go review that vocabulary, and you have to reach out to your health teachers, how that vocabulary is being used on an individual lesson.
From today, I'm just curious, has it been pulled?
Okay?
Has it been pulled, is it going to be pulled, or is it gonna stay on there?
What, what is in current now is what it is. When did you look at that?
About 20 minutes ago.
Yep. Yep, it's still in. Of course.
See, so that's, that's where I'm having a hard time, like you, what you're putting up here, I think every parent here would say, that's fine, right?
Correct. And it's supported by vocabu... No, I'm not missing it. It's supported by vocabulary and by activities and by learning goals have to go into that.
But none, none of the slides showed any of the words that show, it was just an indicator, which makes us all feel like happy and warm and fuzzy with your little slide chart.
I'm just making a present day's, I'm not trying to make you a happier one.
But it's not like, so where is the stuff that we were as parents upset about and angry about, because it's not on that slide?
Right.
Because it's there.
But it's still there, telling me.
Correct. And we always advise parents to go look and review and see what's there.
So let me, let me add.
So that's all.
So let's go back to what we said earlier, that since, since the Listen and Learn and everything in between, we listened to the feedback, the questions, the emails, the phone calls, and we made significant revisions. We're just showing you the student learning objectives, but you, and obviously you did, Mrs. Armato, you have to go back and take a look at the vocabulary, the enduring understandings that are all related to the student learning objectives. And we're still, you know, going...
And there is still vocabulary contained within those?
And let me, and let me, let me just say one more thing about the standards. Good question about the standards. The standards are handed to us. We base curriculum, we write curriculum based on the standards. The standards are there for us to be able to answer questions that come up in the classroom, because they may come up. But that doesn't mean that just because it comes up as a question perhaps, that it's going to be a full-blown discussion. It might be a definition, it might be, teacher pulls the student to the side and says, you know what, you need to go home and have a conversation with your parents about that particular question. Because we, we don't have crystal balls, we can't predict what is going to be asked, but our curriculum serves as that guideline for lesson planning so that we know what the lesson is going to look like. And let me say this, and I said it earlier, I, I understand, there are still going to be parents that do not embrace this, do not want it, and that's why we have the ability for you to opt out. And, and we're, we're working on alternate lessons, our principals are working hard every day to do that, so that they're not just going to sit in the library reading a book, or they're not just going to have a, a independent study or a study hall, because that's not instruction, and that's not alternate instruction.
It will vary by building.
And it will, and by grade.
And it will, and by grade. 100% consistent in the beginning.
Yes.
Six of them, and some in those sensitive grades, 2, 5, 8, 9, 10. I'd like to know specifically, from the Listen and Learn, which details, which things that you revised, that you listened to the parents?
So, 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 so we've got an, we've got an active document going, we've had a lot of active things going on. You know, I, I, we tried doing that, we tried actually listing out what we were changing over time, but it's been such a dynamic interaction between the Board of Education, between myself, between Dr. Pereira, and our health teachers, we just couldn't do it. Like we had, so you really have to go back to the document to see, and, and I'm kind of giving you the window of how to go and look, all right? And vocabulary is an important part of that. We have it usually under Skills, or we have it under Knowledge, at the bottom of the maps. So that's where I really encourage you to go, and then when you find that thing, or that unit topic, reach out to your health teacher. All right? I, they have fielded dozens of calls so far, I can't tell you how many people are coming off the opt-out list. Not to encourage you to do it, but they're, and you may not, that's fine, and that's your right, okay?
And although I have ultimate confidence that my children, my 10-year-old not hearing certain words.
Right. Yeah. So we tried, but it, it just wasn't gonna happen that way, because we were just making way too many revisions.
But since you listened and learned, and made some specific changes.
So our, our Board of Education was very integral to that, because they listened and learned as well. All right? So sitting very specifically with all individual maps, and, and they could maybe shake their heads, but they, we made a lot of revisions right there on the spot with a lot of their comments, and a lot of the things that they were hearing from you guys, hearing from us, but remember, we still have to conform to the spirit of health. And spirit of health is a certain way, and there are certain, like I kind of highlighted, there's certain times and frames and things that have to be done. If it's specific vocabulary, reach out to your health teacher, go, when you're talking about that, get my kid out of the room.
But it's not only that, it's also that another child may have mentioned that word.
Correct.
And what was gonna happen in the grass?
Then be prepared to talk about it when you get home.
Well, I already have.
Okay? Good. Because it will happen, that's right. They'll talk about it on the bus and in the, of course they will.
And they're with their peers' sex. And although I have ultimate confidence that my children are not my class...
That's fine. So there we are.
...a 10-year-old not hearing certain words.
Right. Yeah, so we tried, but it, it just wasn't gonna happen that way, because we were just making way too many revisions.
But since you listened and learned and made some specific changes.
Uh, so our, our Board of Education was very integral to that, because they listen and learn as well, alright? So sitting very specifically with all individual maps, and, and they could maybe shake their heads, but they, we made a lot of revisions right there on the spot with a lot of their comments and a lot of the things that they were hearing from you guys, hearing from us, but remember, we still have to conform to the spirit of health. And spirit of health is a certain way, and there's certain, like I kinda highlighted, there's certain times and frames and things that have to be done. If it's specific vocabulary, reach out to your health teacher, go, "When you're talking about that, get my kid out of the room."
But it's not only that, it's also another child may have mentioned that word.
Correct.
And what was gonna happen in the grass.
Then be prepared to talk about it when you get home.
Well, I already have.
Okay, good, because it will happen, that's right. They'll talk about it on the bus and, in the, of course they will.
And with their peers' sex.
Of course they will, right? And then, but the, the, and it's a good point, because what health does is it stops the misinformation of their peers, because that's even worse than not hearing the true way it is. They hear it from their peers, "Hey, I just saw a video, check this out, you don't know who he's sitting next to on the bus." You have no idea? You may, but you, you, you may not, in any given day. That's what the health curriculum really drives home, that this is true, this is definition style, this is, it is for you, but not for, and studies show, remember, over 75% of the population, it's not their job.
That is, that is tough.
So it's tough.
I get that bridge.
And as a public entity, we were trying to bridge those things, and that's what this is very truly now, okay? So thank you, alright? Uh, there's a couple behind you.
Appreciate the transparency and thank you for what you did show, go online and I'll take a look at it just quick. From an opt-out perspective, will the parents be able to have, when the lessons will be taking place, and when their opt-out occurs, will be one form that says, "Please opt-out for this week, this week, this week," versus, "Hey, in two weeks you're gonna learn about this, in two weeks you're gonna..." And then the parents have to go back?
So, so you, you never have to go back in if you've already opted out, the, the teachers are already looking at that, but we are, we are working to refine the process.
I might not want him to sit in or sit in on X or Y.
Right, right.
Like, think about brushing your teeth.
Yep, we're working on it. We're, if, we had some parents who opted out of everything, not really, kinda thinking that everything was bad, like, "Wait a minute, you're opting out of nutrition?" Right. So we're reviewing all opt-outs with the parents who've done it, and it's a live form, you can, and you can always reverse it, alright? And we're, we're kinda working on refining it now, but remember, we're eight days into school, like, you know, we're, we're trying to settle and kinda land on some things.
And I just wanna add...
Yes.
Something that Mr. Zulinski just said, for those parents that who opted out of everything, perhaps don't have that understanding that there are some parts of health that they want their child to learn, so we will be reaching out to those parents, the principals will be reaching out to the parents, the health teachers will be reaching out, so that those parents can get more specific on what exactly...
Did someone drop out of drugs, Ed?
Yeah.
Oops.
My daughter might want to have that.
No, no, they're not allowed to have that unless you really have already done it.
And even after tonight, if...
What did that say? What did that say though?
It was a mistake, she clicked the wrong button.
Okay, because otherwise, what did it say about your community, that, that even that, which is so obviously not problematic, but as you said, that was a mistake.
She clicked the wrong button.
Okay.
And most people have clicked buttons, they've over-clicked in certain units, but actually it's done, it's been pretty good. Uh, parents have really drilled down to specific units that they had a problem with, and, uh, it's been pretty good, and I have to, I have to compliment my district supervisors, I kinda developed that form, we can sort it, we're working on it, so, um, and, uh, and as I looked around, because I kinda paid attention to things, looked around the county, we are one of the more transparent ones, because they had to look at it, they had to go and opt-out, so it's been working well, I have to say. Just one more, and then we're gonna have to move on.
I shall.
Or two more, because I think Ms. Armato had her head up too.
Oh, sorry. Um, my daughter's at, has a middle school, um, so if I have questions, um, don't call the principal, call the health teacher.
Email the health teacher as soon as you can. Uh, Ms. Schreier is your best bet at the middle school, S. Schreier, you can find her on our directory.
We'll approach her.
Yeah, get to her first. Uh, but she'll direct you, she'll direct you who will be the health teacher.
And if she's not able to answer your question...
Call the principal.
You can reach out to us.
Yeah.
I, um, opted out of all of it, um, I wouldn't have opted out of alcohol and alcohol. There are some things, I really don't care, um, if she's in there, but for consistency purposes, I'm my daughter's best teacher as far, and this is my opinion, so I'd like to recommend that my child have gym. Is that a possibility?
It's, again, it's gonna be building by building, they're developing plans, it's not always a possibility. Sometimes we don't have a gym period going on.
But it might be.
Because a gym is healthy.
Every building is different. So every building has to come up with their own, remember, we don't have subs, can't get subs, don't have places to put kids all the time, so every building's gonna be a little different, and every situation's gonna be a little different, just keep that in mind. Ms. Armato, you're last.
Two more questions, so there were no changes at all through the 9th through 12th curriculum, is that correct?
We've made revisions, but no hardcore changes? No.
The vocabulary words that I discussed last meeting, they're all the same, it's all the same.
In 9th through 12th, yes.
Okay, and the second thing I have is, and this is a serious question, we're a bunch of eighth graders in here, I'm gonna look at you and ask you to explain to me oral sex.
Okay. Alright, I'm not the health teacher, okay? You have to remember that lessons are individual, lessons are based on how the class is operating, lessons are based on how adult the class or not adult the class is, and our teachers are very good about those things, alright? So, I, so you're gonna have to reach out to your eighth grade health teacher.
Literally send an email, please explain oral sex to me, I'm being...
No, you're gonna send an email and say, "When you get to the, to that conversation or that lesson..."
I'm not gonna worry about it, but I...
Okay, well then...
Okay, then you don't have to worry about that, okay?
Well, yeah, I do worry about it, it's not good.
So then we encourage, so then, as, so then as, so then as we develop things, I encourage you to look at the Google Classroom, alright? See where they're headed with things, okay? And then, you know, you have to have that conversation with the, the experts involved, and they are experts, they're all very well-trained, and most of them are veterans.
Talk to them about that.
Correct, they are. Okay? Thank you. Thank you, everybody, thank you, board, for allowing me to present again.
Thank you, Mrs. Zulinski.
Thank you.
Very nice, thank you. Dr. Perera?
And so, before I conclude my comments, um, I just, again, I have to thank the community, because your feedback was very helpful, but even after tonight, if you still have questions, this isn't the end-all-be-all, please reach out to us, and if we can't answer your questions, like Mr. Zulinski said about specifically how a lesson's gonna be taught, we will find the person who can answer that question specifically, alright?
Can you guys just please check your spam folders, because my emails...
Oh, thanks, Tom.
...spam, and I can't...
Oh?
So I, and I emailed the health teacher, and she hasn't responded, so I think...
Okay.
It's tough to do that all the time, because I've been through, like, the tech guys, I was the tech director for two years, um, call the school, please, and we, we might have to whitelist you or get you, like, something different.
Or just call my office tomorrow, and we'll figure it out.
Leave a message.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Alright, that concludes my, uh, comments.
Thank you, Dr. Pereira. Okay, we're gonna go into a public comment session, an audience member wishing to make a comment will raise his or her hand, and when called upon, state their name, address, affiliation, intention to make a statement. Comments will be addressed to the board president, comments are made on an issue, one issue at a time, comments will be limited to five minutes, no audience member shall be recognized twice until, all who have wished to comment have been recognized. This portion of the meeting is for public comments, only there'll be no questions answered. The purpose of this board meeting is to perform our business in public, everyone is entitled to a public comment. If there is a question for the board, there's an established chain of command to follow. So with that, we're gonna open it up.
Regina Descenza, Sunset Drive, Sunrise Beach. Um, I'm sorry I had to touch the microphone, but you know, at four foot 10, it has to come down a little bit. Um, first I have to say, I read the entire 19 pages of the recent allegations against the district and the football team coaches. There was an article in the Asbury Park Press September 9th. I'm shocked, appalled and dismayed by the details that I read in the lawsuit. If only one of the several allegations are true, there are a lot of people that need to examine their conscience. It was truly one of the saddest ordeals that I have ever read. Next, it came to my attention this past week that the previous Lacey School Board meeting from August 18th went missing on Comcast Channel 21 for an unknown period of time. Therefore, many people in town missed it unless they were able to watch on YouTube. I urge everyone to please watch last month's August meeting, if possible, on YouTube, not the August 15th retreat meeting. So now I need to go over some important points that I covered in my comment last month. Mr. Scannell, Ms. Claus and Mr. Armato are excluded from this issue. My ethics lawyer notified me a couple of weeks ago that there was an inquiry by the NJSIG into her total fees, as if I did not speak the truth last month. 26K is 26K, my number equaled her number. And the story is this, there's a total of four New Jersey Department of Education school ethics cases pending. They are: the Rossi versus Giordano case, C-73-19; the Markatello versus Giordano case, C-02-20; the Descenza versus Giordano case, C-04-20; and Giordano et al. versus Descenza, C-75-19. The other people that signed with former board president Giordano are Ms. Downing, Mr. Polino, Mr. Peters, Ms. McAvoy and Mr. Nick Morandi. Through the New Jersey Schools Insurance Group, the NJSIG, the district had a claim for $100,000 to cover the legal fees for these ethics suits. As of this past June, July, over $109,000 has been paid out for the legal fees since December of 2019. Therefore, the entire $100,000 insurance claim has been exhausted, and we've been notified of that fact. Mr. Giordano selected two local lawyers to defend him, Mr. Chris Dusty and Mr. Chris Supsy. I chose an experienced ethics attorney through the NJSIG. The bills for these legal fees are posted on the website, opermachine.com. I made a request to the NJSIG for the invoices, I printed copies and added them up myself, and here are the totals through June 2022. I don't know how to do spreadsheets, so I had to hand-write and add up every month's invoice. Mr. Christopher Dusty is the legal top biller to defend Mr. Giordano at $57,000. The runner-up is my attorney at less than half that, $26,000. And in third place, Mr. Supsy's legal bills to defend Mr. Giordano are at $25,000. So far, the total to defend Mr. Giordano is truly at $82,000. Why did I bring this up? Because I was accused of running up the legal bills and exhausting the insurance claim, and I have the paper to prove otherwise. Mr. Giordano should have picked an experienced NJSIG attorney like I did, and there might have still been insurance coverage to spare. Instead, the public will now have to repay the remaining bills until the cases are fully settled. As I mentioned last month, these suits are ongoing two and a half years. The NJDOE OAL hearings are scheduled for October 2022, in about three weeks, the hearings will start. There's an article covering the legal fee fiasco on the Lacey Patch Bulletin Board. If anyone wants to read it, it's online. Stay tuned, more to follow. If anyone has questions, my number is 609-290-5125. If any board member should choose to discuss this matter during their comments, I respectfully request an additional public comment if needed. Mr. Peters, I did start to review your emails that I requested via Open Public Records, the proper way to do so, and I have drawn a conclusion, but I'm not quite finished yet, so I will save my comment on transparency for another evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Lighter?
Regina, did you use the timer when you did that?
No.
You were right on that.
I think it's the words, no way I'd tell you.
Thanks for putting the mic down, Regina, as a four-foot-eleven girl. Uh, Amory Lighter, the Woods of Bamber, um, I don't know what month it was, but when all of this, uh, health curriculum changes were coming about, most of you were up there saying, "No, you're not gonna vote for it, not in our town, not in our place," um, and it looks like you guys are already talking like it's past, and I know that that vote is coming. I appreciate, um, you know, being open to different things. I've shared, um, with, uh, Dr. Pereira, my family history, I grew up with a brother who was gay, I have a niece who used to be my nephew, um, I'm open, you know, whatever you do is your business, um, I'll take care of my kids. And I appreciate the opportunity to opt-out. It sounds disgusting, but I appreciate that, because I don't want somebody that I don't know, whether it's, uh, the different health teachers at the school, I don't know where they come from, I don't know if they're gonna be as compassionate or as understanding or use a language that my child understands. Um, and Natalie's already mad at me because I opted her out. "Ma, why'd you opt me out? I'm the only one in my class that's getting opt-out."
No, she's not.
Oh, I know she's not. But I said, "Look, it's either opt-out or I'll clean toilets and you're going to Catholic school." That's the choice, and then she shut up, but it's a sad, it's really painful, this is awful. I'm sad about it. Um, I don't remember what else I wanted to say, because I'm just so overwhelmed by all of this. You know, good luck to all of you with this healthcare stuff, I know that it's a lot of work. Um, it was a lot of work to choose the right words, to tell my daughters that their male cousin is now their female cousin, um, but we do that with respect for him, her. Um, and the other thing, can we have a heterosexual day at school? Since we have a gay pride day, can we have a day at school where it's like, you know, good to be heterosexual? I mean, I'm of Italian descent, can we have an Italian day, that there's, um, you know, a Spanish month? You know, like, when is it gonna stop? You know, how about we just all be good human day? I, I know when my brother was up and coming, like, we, when he knew he was gay, we knew he was gay, he died in '87 of AIDS. I'm gonna tell you, he'd be disgusted by what's going on. It's really not about gay pride, it's just about being treated decently. I played softball, I got a lot of lesbian girlfriends, and I'm gonna be honest with you, it was hard for them to go out in public and hold hands as girlfriends, whatever, as mates, um, without getting looks, and it's not that way today, and I'm happy for them for that. But you know, what you do behind closed doors, that's your, I don't wanna see anybody making out or doing whatever. So, right, equally, gay pride day and, and rainbows and whatever, it's a little much, it's a little much, let's have, if you're gonna do that, then hetero day. Let's just be good to each other day, let's keep it simple day. It's getting crazy around here. Amen. Thank you.
Anyone else? Come on down.
Hello, Jessica DeLuca, Heatherington Court. Um, so I, I really do wanna say thank you for taking the time and making a new curriculum. However, I feel like you guys, you kinda missed some of the points. Like, we sat in that meeting and we were mad about those key words and about the really tough stuff to talk about, and Mr. Zulinski, with all due respect, that was a softball right there that you just threw up there, because it was just all stuff that we agree with. Yeah, we want our kids to brush their teeth. Like, this is being, I feel like you're making us, you, you keep saying you're transparent, but you guys are not. You guys are actually making us feel like we're the dumb ones, like, "Oh, it's no big deal, you know, we're just gonna teach them how to brush their teeth." No, we were worried about all that other stuff that you guys didn't put on that screen, and for that reason, it, it's upsetting to me, but I, 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 there's nothing more that I can say. We've all asked you numerous times to listen to us and to be transparent, but the, but you guys aren't doing that. As much as you say you are, I feel like you're placating us, and it's, it's not working for somebody like me, I can tell you that much. Um, I did remove my children, and they are going to a Catholic school, uh, you're probably a little happy to hear that, because I might make a little few less board meetings now, but I'm still gonna continue to fight for all the kids that their parents can't afford to send them to a Catholic school, because of all this going on. I have a teacher friend in Manchester, she teaches second grade, so she's in the elementary school. Every single one of the signs outside of the bathroom went from toilet, which we all know toilet is considered both gender, correct? To now it's considered, it, it actually states, "Gender-neutral." Why do we need that? I hope Lacey never decides to do something like that, but I also know a Lacey teacher told me that in the elementary school, or maybe it's Milpon, forgive me, I may be incorrect, but that the one bathroom is already changed from the, the teachers, it's no longer allowed It's no longer allowed to them, and it's considered a gender-neutral bathroom. When is this going to stop? Like she was saying, this is getting ridiculous. You guys are opening up all these entrances for these kids to just continue to think it's cool to be gay, to be trans, to be this. Again, I don't care what you want to be, but to teach and to introduce that to a second grader? This is not the world that I want my children to grow up in at all. I can't stress it enough that you guys are missing the point. That's all I have tonight. Thank you.
Allison Hollister, Forkett River. First, I'd like to say, since Mr. Keenan is here, you did a phenomenal job on your speech at the freshman orientation. You should be going around to each school in this district. And that bully speech, that was, I was in tears. That was an amazing speech. I sat there with some other parents, and we just looked at each other with jaws down. And if those kids didn't get the point, then we need to smack them upside the head. You know? That's how you feel. But amazing job, kudos, because it was down, you really drilled it home. So I appreciate that, coming from a parent whose child is bullied.
Please don't smack them upside the head.
Yeah, no, don't. You can with mine if you want. Yeah, yeah. The other thing I need to bring up is an issue that is going on with the freshman football team. My son has, cleats were stolen out of the locker. I guess lockers are broken. He did the absolute thing that he always does, puts a lock on it. Cleats were stolen. No big deal. I'll go buy another one. Families who can't afford that can't. Cleats today, cellphone tomorrow. We all know how much cellphones cost. They're not cheap. So if a kid steals a cellphone, who's responsible? As I was told, I can't get reimbursed for those cleats. No big deal. Cleats are cleats. Cellphone, jewelry. Because the kids are trying to do the right thing and put it in the locker, something needs to be done about that because that's just wrong. This month is National Suicide Awareness Month, in case a lot of you guys don't know. I did not see any signs, especially in the high school, that should be something that spread. Yesterday, while I was attending class to get my certification for become a teacher, one of my peers went up to the fifth floor of the Kane Ocean Building and jumped off. We ended classes early as our professor notified us because we had to know and told us that certain areas are blocked off. He can't go certain ways, so please go this way, and explained to us what happened. As I sat there in tears, along with other fellow classmates, we sat in tears along with the professor. We just had suicide week last week at the university. But it still didn't matter. This person thought that the only way to ease their pain was to jump off that building from the fifth floor. We had to walk around the gates where the blood was splattered. It was horrific. I was in tears. That doesn't mean that, it hit home. It hit home. And I just read an article right before I went into class. A Middletown North High School student sophomore, fourteen years old, killed herself. It's not just bullying. It's distress of everyday life. It's depression. It's anxiety. It's, these kids have so much on their plates, and we, as adults, as a society, are putting so much more onto them. Between all this health stuff, life in general, it's, when is enough going to be enough? So I would just like to ask, do more for the mental health of these children, please. Because if it could happen at Kane Ocean, it's just going to be a matter of time before it hits home. And we don't, we as a community, we don't want that. We don't want to have to do a GoFundMe or a meal train for a family who lost a child. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, seeing that, we're going to move on. Board committee reports?
Dan Bell, Forkett River. Just want to read something really quick. There's something called the Judeo-Christian ethic. It's what, it's seven principles that some of our founding documents, our Constitution, Declaration of Independence, our Bill of Rights, use these principles. Principle number one is the dignity of human life. And I'm not going to belabor the point, but obviously, suicide just being mentioned. Human life needs to be recognized as important at whatever stage. Principle number two, the traditional monogamous family. I introduced myself last month. I'm a Baptist pastor, born-again Christian. I don't think I need to go down the list of things, I believe. But the traditional monogamous family is something that we used to hold high. I know it's what raised me. It's what's raised my children. And we wonder why families are falling apart. We've left our traditions. Principle number three, a national work ethic. I won't spend much time on that. We are the laziest we've ever been. Number four, the right to a God-centered education. God is nowhere in this curriculum. Nowhere. I saw several times on the cute little slides that were up there, a healthy lifestyle, healthy lifestyle, healthy lifestyle. And I understand nutrition. I understand the complication, Mr. Zalinski. I cannot imagine trying to build a curriculum to encompass all the chaos that's out there and trying to meet an end goal of having kids leave high school educated, sane, and hopefully in the right direction. I can't imagine the hours that have been spent trying to go over that curriculum. I'll be honest, I was sitting there going, man, I'm glad I wasn't on the board because I wouldn't have to sit and hold those hours. But that's one of the principles that our nation was founded on, is the right to a God-centered education. It's amazing to me that we're at a point where parents have to opt out of things they don't. And I'm not going to criticize because I understand you're trying to balance it all. It's chaotic. But let's consider maybe introducing, just, I would teach it for free, a class about God and where we truly came from. And that would put the value back in life. We've taught these kids for years that they've evolved. And now we wonder why they act like animals. If we taught them that God created each one of them specifically with a purpose, it puts some value in their life. And if God is the one we answer to, which by the way is point number seven, our personal accountability to God. This doesn't depend on your belief in God, by the way. I'm standing here as a Baptist pastor. I know I'm accountable to God. But there may be somebody sitting here as an atheist going, oh, I don't believe that. I hate to break the bad news to you, it doesn't matter. You will still stand before God at the end of this life. And so these principles that have founded our country need to be put back into our curriculum. Number six was common decency. The lady spoke about her gay brother who had passed away and talked about a nephew who was now a niece, or a niece who was now a nephew, I can't remember, but to treat them with common decency. And that is important. But I would encourage us to put God back in the curriculum. And as I mentioned, I'd come in free of charge and teach a class on that if something would be put together. And so I do just want to end with this. You may not know God. He's worked pretty hard to reveal himself. He came down, we know him as Jesus Christ. And his desire is that everyone would know him. That's why he came to earth. And if we would just reintroduce Jesus Christ to our curriculum, it wouldn't get rid of all the problems because people still have a sin nature, but it would eliminate most of what you're stressing over, trying to figure out how to handle it. And so I don't even know if I would be allowed to teach a class. But the offer's there, Mr. Zalinski. I'd need no pay. So it wouldn't be a burden on the school district. In fact, I might even take you out to lunch every day just so I could come and teach it. And I would take that out of my own pocket. But that's my offer. Hopefully, it's taken advantage of. And I do pray that each one of you will take into consideration the fact that at the end of all of this, you will have to look God in the eye and answer for the curriculum that teaches our young kids. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Pastor. I do have to make a comment. You see the trouble we're having when we're trying to introduce this stuff? Can you imagine us trying to introduce God into some of the families?
They can opt out.
Right? Sure. Can you imagine that? Can you imagine that?
All you know, you can opt out. That's what counts.
Can you imagine that? Listen, I didn't say that was necessarily wrong. I'm just saying, can you imagine? But thank you. Are you coming up?
I'll be as brief as possible. My name is Melody Pryor. I feel like I'm very loud. Forkett River, Waycom Road. First, I would like to thank the school board, teachers, and the support staff for all the years of hard work and dedication. Also, I'd like to thank each of you and the community who come here. Take your time and speak because it's very important that no matter what, whether you agree or disagree, that the lines of communication remain open. It's extremely important. If I may introduce myself, my name is Melody Pryor. I'm a Lynnhurst transport to Forkett River in 2012. I'm currently running for Lacy Board of Education because I wish to assist the board to become involved, to continue enhancing students' education, hence their overall experience, allowing, giving students happy memories. We can obtain or very at least help increase communication. And this will catch on, hopefully. Excuse me. I offer the diversity of abilities and flexibility and communication skills that will allow me to work with the board to reach decisions and goals. Lastly, I feel is critical to bring students, teachers, administrators, and all support staff to creating a bridge through dialogue, encompassing all parents, families, and attempt to spread a sense of community. Strong education equals strong children. So thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, let's start with board committee reports. We're going to start with finance, Mrs. McAvoy.
Sure. We met on Thursday, Aprilie. Myself, Mr. Plino, Mr. Scanlon, Dr. Pereira, and Mrs. Sylvia. We talked about the new health insurance quotes on Monday. We're getting the new quotes, and it might be an additional fifteen to twenty percent on the health increase to the district. So we looked at, we had two men come in to present to the committee the options for health benefits. So on Monday, the state will tell us what the new premiums are. And after that, as a board, we're going to discuss possibly switching over benefits to save money to the employees and to us. Yes, Mrs. DeSensio, you know how bad that is. So Brown and Brown did come in. And after Monday, we'll make plans to meet with the union, and the union will meet with the union members. So we're hoping that it will be agreeable to all. We discussed the wrestling room. And at this point, we have no funds, so the wrestling room will not be discussed in the near future with the Board of Education. There's no money to give for a wrestling room. We did find some more space for them so they can use that. And if there's any more discussions, the wrestling team and the parents know that they will go through the athletic director. So it'll be more at the athletic director's level at this point. The football field, we're so excited. We will be having girls and boys soccer games at night. By next week, we will be announcing the dates of the night games. So more players will be able to play under the lights. So that's very exciting news. The construction projects that we're working on, the P.I. systems in all schools are complete, and there's a small punch list of items that will be addressed. The exterior lighting at Milpon and the high school is complete. The boiler replacement at Cedar Creek and the middle school is still ongoing. The completion date is targeted for October fifteenth. The fire alarm system at all schools is ongoing. There's been delays due to the materials coming in. The HVAC replacement is still ongoing, and there's been some delays with the materials coming in for that also. The informaCast project is now complete. This project installed panic buttons at all schools that are directly, that go directly to the police station. So we are now compliant with Alyssa's law. We discussed our facilities manager, Mr. John Smith. He's taking seven courses right now to get more certifications for the facilities manager. So once he's complete all of his classes and his coursework, we are giving him a fifty-five-hundred increase because he started out very, very low. And the board is so happy with his work and all that he's doing for the district. And with these certifications, it will help us. It'll actually help us. We won't have to go outside to bring people in. We, the board decided that we're going to have a behavior analyst full-time, a contracted position. She was hourly. And by us bringing her in full-time as a contract, we're hoping to save money on the hourly rate. As far as this committee, we met with the town council last week. We have a liaison with Mr. Dykoff, Mrs. LaRae, and Mr. McDonald. So we discussed the LEED program. The town is in partnership with us. And starting October tenth, all seventh graders throughout the year will be involved in LEED, which is Law Enforcement Against Drugs. So it's a ten-week program. And by the end of the year, every seventh grader will have it. And the town is splitting the cost with us, which was very nice. And we also discussed with them all the proposed condos and townhouses that are coming in. And we are discussing how many condos, how many townhouses, what will be one-bedroom, what will be two-bedroom. We are just trying to get an idea of how many students are coming into the district. So they gave us a lot of information on that. And the facilities and finance committee is also the negotiations committee. And we have reached a settlement with the union. And we're still working on the salary guide. So by the beginning of next week, the board will go back to the full board and present the salary guide that's going to be agreed on. And the union representatives will go back to their union members and call meetings, and they will vote. So by October fifteenth meeting, we're hoping to ratify that. And that's about it. Are there any questions from the board members? Okay. Thank you. Mr. Plino?
Mrs. McAvoy, just real quickly, Mr. Smith's money he's getting, he's paying for his classes now himself?
Yes, he is. He's paying for all the classes.
Right. So that's a part, you know, not only the job he's doing, but the fact that we're reimbursing him too for the amount of money he's putting out for classes.
Yes, and he's saving us the money by, he's going to be able to spray and do different things that we are paying out for.
If I can jump in?
Could I just chime in on Mrs. McAvoy's comments about... Could I, could I just chime in on Mrs. McAvoy's comments about HVAC upgrades and the fire alarm upgrades that are delayed? We have operating fire alarms and fire systems. It's the upgrades that have been delayed. Just wanna make sure everyone's aware that all the schools, everything is operating. It's the improved, the improvements that are being delayed. I just want, don't want anybody to have the impression that, oh wait, what schools don't have fire alarms? Okay? Just wanted to clarify that.
Anything else?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I just wanna bring to the public's attention that Mrs. McAvoy's effort to get the soccer teams and the lacrosse teams and the field hockey teams to play in our high school field is a big deal, because once upon a time, if you wanted to see your son or daughter play a game under the lights, if it was a soccer game, you went to Hebrew. If it was a lacrosse game, you went to Klune. And now, these kids get to walk out of their locker room, across the parking lot, and walk onto their own field. And I think it's a big accomplishment, so I think you should be commended for that. Well done.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you, Mr. Armato. Anything else? Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. I'll do policy. We had our meeting September sixth, started at three-thirty. Myself, Mr. Peters, Ms. Downing, and Dr. Pereira were in attendance. The first thing we did, we discussed service learning, community service, which is the volunteer hours that we've been talking about. We're looking to possibly start that. The committee discussed the implementation of service learning program for high school students. Dr. Pereira shared some resources for us, pros and cons if we did it. What we did realize is that we're, we can't make it mandatory, but we're still looking into, you know, implementing it soon. So, there's more on that. The next three policies we looked at, we already have them in place, but we just have slight revisions. Policy zero-one-six-eight, recording of board meetings. The committee made a slight revision to this policy, changing shall record to may record Board of Ed meetings. These will always be recorded live, though. We also looked at use of school facilities, policy and regulation seven-five-one-zero. The committee worked with Dr. Pereira and Ms. Sylvia also, and made revisions on both policy and regulation seven-five-one-zero to modify language related to priorities and updated fee schedules. We looked at policy seven-four-four-zero, school district security. The committee made a slight revision to this policy to update language related to staff signing in and signing out of the building as a safety precaution in an, if an emergency does occur. The next policy we looked at and regulation was maintenance and repair. Policy seven-four-one-zero and regulation seven-four-one-zero have been rewritten, and regulation seven-four-one-zero-point-zero-one has been revised to reflect the State Board of Education relocating administrative code sections from NJAC six-A-twenty-six-A to six-A-twenty-six. The regulation guide seven-four-one-zero was mandated for all school districts with two or less in the buildings. That's not us, so we're actually going to abolish that one tonight. And we also discussed policy seven-four-one-zero, which now includes the requirements for school district to employ certified educational facilities manager, which is John Smith, and so we have that already in place. We had another discussion on, well, we had two more discussions. One was the policy zero-one-six-four, and that's the conduct of board meeting. So, we discussed possibly changing the order, resuming after we come back from executive session to start at seven instead of seven-thirty. And I think we're pretty much all in agreeance to make that change, so we're gonna put that on most likely for next month, but we'll let you know. And then, we also talked about, we were supposed to have a meeting to do our board goals today, but our rep was not available, so we'll get that done next month, and then we'll share our board goals and the district goals as well. And I think that's it.
Great. Thank you. Any questions?
That's it.
Thank you. Curriculum, Mrs. Stowe.
Okay. So, the curriculum committee met, myself, Mrs. McAvoy, Mr. Polino, Dr. Pereira, and Mr. Zelinski. And we had a full agenda, but we basically spent the whole entire curriculum meeting really dissecting the standards. I wanna thank, before I even go on, I wanna thank Mrs. McAvoy and Mrs. Claus. They sat down after the board listen and learn. I was in Greece, so they sat, thank you for doing this. They sat and dissected everything that was said at the listen, listen and learn, and then they dissected the standards. So, thank you for doing that. And then, after that, we met his curriculum, and then we called each board member, and then I sat with, I think, all of you, along with Dr. Pereira and Mrs., Mr. Zelinski, not Mrs. So, we've been spending a lot of time, as you know, all week dissecting and making changes. So, and these changes were based on parent feedback from our meetings, and just, I'll let the other board members speak about their feelings about what we did. But, it was a really tense week going through everything. We also covered, in your agendas, everyone, we're gonna vote on the SSO job description, and there was a copy under your attachments that you were sent. All curriculum approvals will be on the agenda for tonight, all curriculum, not just health and phys ed. Advanced placement, excuse me, advanced placement fee schedule for twenty-two, twenty-three. Mr. Zelinski led a discussion of the advanced placement fee schedule for the upcoming school year. Students will receive one free exam over the course of their four-year high school career, and students will pay sixty dollars towards each exam afterwards. Students will be reimbursed, the sixty dollars, for each exam where they receive a three-year higher. Advanced placement exam requirements, that all students who enroll in AP course will be required to take the corresponding AP exam. Due to the fact that the AP exam is integral to the completion of the course, students who refuse to pay for or take the exam will have their course reduced to in status from AP to honors, thereby affecting their GPA. And all parents, I believe, Mr. Zelinski got a letter about this, correct?
Yep. They probably got it two days ago. It outlines back to you, seven pages, lots of details in it, but yes.
Okay. We also went over class sizes. We asked for an update, because we had added a third grade class at Forkett River School, so we wanted to see the numbers. We wanted to make sure some classes weren't higher than the others. So, we reviewed that. Mrs. Claus talked about the service credit. Mrs. McAvoy talked about LEED. Special education. The eighteen-to-twenty-one program will be continuing to attend the Y MCA weekly for age-appropriate P.E. Activities include swimming, yoga, and weight training. Tentative Challenger Flag Football League schedule. Times and locations will be announced at a later date, but mark your calendars for September eighteenth, twenty-fifth, October second, ninth, sixteenth, twenty-third, and thirtieth. Eighty-five staff members have completed their CPI training, and the next training's gonna include the powers on October tenth. That's a great thing, 'cause I think everybody should be trained in CPI for our special education programs. The next CPAG meeting is September sixteenth. Is that still good?
October fifteenth.
October sixteenth.
October fifth.
October fifth. Okay. We had a wrong date on here. Okay. So, October fifth is the next CPAG meeting. And that's it. That's my report.
Anybody have any questions? Okay. That concludes our committee reports. Spotlight on education, Mr.?
On graduates.
I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, graduates. Mr. Armato?
Hey, good evening, everyone. Quite a, quite a list of graduates that we have here, and being that it's football season, let's get ready for some football. I'd like to recognize two of our graduates that played a key role on our undefeated state championship team. So, tonight, I wanna talk about Warren Smith. Warren graduated from Lacey in two thousand eight and was a member of the state championship team that went undefeated. Good story about Warren. I didn't know this, as I spoke to him today. So, he played defensive back and quarterback on this team, and it was a two-prong approach on the, on the offensive side. So, when they wanted to throw the ball, they would bring Warren in, and when they wanted to hand the ball off, they'd bring another quarterback in. Pretty cool story. And in that state final, Warren threw two touchdown passes to our varsity men's basketball coach, Sean McAdoo. So, pretty good story there. After graduating from Lacey, Warren earned a scholarship and attended and played football for the University of Maine, where he broke many records as a quarterback and still has some records standing today. Upon graduating from Maine, Warren went to Germany and played pro football for a short stint. Pretty impressive. When Warren returned to the States, he coached at the college level and began a career as an arena league quarterback player, winning the Arena League Championship this past season in Albany. So, as you can see, there's a trend here of a champion. Warren has settled down nicely here in Lacey as a gym teacher, football coach, and basketball coach for the last nine years. As a football coach, Warren is instrumental in developing of our quarterbacks, defensive backs, and wide receivers. On and off the field, Warren is respected as an up-and-coming coach and wouldn't be surprised that one day soon, he will be a head coach. As a basketball coach, Warren's passion plays a big role in the development of his team and has enjoyed success on the basketball court as well. It's been my pleasure and my family's pleasure of getting to know Warren over the years, and we feel we are lucky as a district to have Warren here in Lacey. The next young man I'd like to spotlight is Chris D'Amico. Chris D'Amico, who also, who graduated in two thousand seven, was a huge part of that historic undefeated state championship team. After graduating from Lacey, Chris has also earned a scholarship to Kane University as a running back and played a key role in the key Kane winning a conference championship. Again, championship pedigree. After his college career, after his college career came to an end, Chris returned to Lacey as a substitute teacher from two thousand twelve to two thousand fourteen, then became a full-time teacher and coach. Chris is now a coach for our freshman and varsity football team, and an impactful lacrosse coach, and our men's ice hockey coach. Chris still lives in Lacey, is now married to his beautiful wife, Nicole, and they have a handsome son named Colton. Is that after your son, Derek? Is that after Colton Claus? As a parent who has two children attending our schools, these, these two men have made a positive impact on the lives of my two boys. Me and Lacey are lucky to have them both playing key roles in the growth of our children and our district. Now, another one. Great family, the Konzadine family. Bobby Konzadine graduated from Stevenson University, where he majored in business and played goalie for his soccer team. He is now in his second year of a graduate school at McDaniel College in Maryland, majoring in human resource, and is a graduate assistant for the men's soccer team. Maddie Konzadine recently graduated from Quinnipiac University. I was afraid I wasn't gonna be able to say that the right way. With a master's in occupational therapy. She is currently doing her second level two-field work and will be taking her boards in February. Maddie credits her science teachers from Lacey High School for their support in preparing her so well for college. So, pretty cool. Championship pedigree, excellence in the classroom, and outstanding young, young people that we have in this district. So, just when you question the district and you question what we're doing here as a school, we got good families taking care of our kids, and we have good teachers taking care of our kids. So, for every good, there's a bad, but remember, for every bad is a lot more good. One bad apple doesn't spoil the whole bunch. So, congratulations to all four people here who were recognized tonight. Thank you.
Just to follow up to that, thank you, Mr. Armato. The spotlights on these graduates will be posted on our website also. So, with that, we're gonna move on to board comments. So, I'll just start on your end, Mr. Armato, if you're ready.
Sure I am.
Go ahead.
Okay. First of all, congratulations to the student of the month, our unsung heroes, and those four phenomenal Eagle Scouts, one who I know very good, very well. I wanna pay a special thank you to Mr. Zelinski, Dr. Pereira, and to all my esteemed colleagues for the commitment they made to the great residents of Lacey to revise this health curriculum. Up until three-thirty in the afternoon, I was sitting in that office making changes. Yes, we did it. I mean, it's not completed, but we worked hard to get the changes implemented. So, what you saw tonight may have made you think that it was a softball. I can trust you. If you go online and look at what once was and what is today, you'll see we're headed in the right direction. It's a work in progress. It's not perfect, but it's getting there. I'd like to point out that what was once a curriculum with cause for concern has been revised with input from the public, the administrators, and this board. Although I believe we can dissect this more at the high school level, we have made progress, and that makes me very happy. Something to take into consideration, although the board will put this curriculum to a vote tonight and most likely pass, this curriculum is still a work in progress. So, I urge you to continue to offer your input, your feedback, until we get it perfect, not only for me, but for everyone. Dr. Pereira, Mr. Zelinski, and this board are committed, and I, and I really mean this, they're committed to get this thing right. It's, it's been a lot of work. I can tell you personally, last night, I was flipping out when I looked at it, and I had a conversation with Kim, and she kinda talked me off the shelf and made me look at it in a different way. And every time I asked to have something removed this afternoon, it wasn't a fight. So, here is the way we handled it. Here's why I don't like it. Here's why I think it should be removed, and here's the impact it can have on our children if we leave it in. Okay, let's take it out. It wasn't a fight. It wasn't an argument. Bring factual evidence to you as to why, not only does it affect you, but everyone that surrounds you. Keep in mind, and this is something that punched me in the face today, as a board member, I have to keep in mind every day that I represent a public school. And I may not like everything that we do in a public school, but I have to understand my role as a board member of a public school. I can still voice my opinion. I can still say I don't like this, and I don't like that, and I can fight, and I can continue to fight to get this perfect. And I promise you, I will fight to get this perfect. And I think everybody here sitting at this stage wants it to be perfect, because this should be the least of our worries, this curriculum, right? We want our kids to excel out in the world. We want them to come to school happy. We wanna focus on an environment, when they come into school, they come into school proud. They come into saying, "I'm a lion." And, and, and that's something that we, we wanna finally get to work on, and I think we're slowly but surely getting there. We're getting this, the state mandate stuff out of the way, and we're getting focused on the most important thing in this school, in this town, is your children. That's what we're focusing on. That's what we wanna focus on. So, I ask you, a little bit more patience, but more feedback. Positive feedback, if you have it. Negative feedback with factual evidence to back it up. That's what helps us get to the, to the end, to the end zone, right? So, continue to put your feedback. Share it with the board. Share it with Mr. Zelinski. No matter how tired he looks right now, he said he wants more. Mrs. Pereira, Dr. Pereira loves this too. She's like, this is the best part of her day. So, I ask that you continue to educate us on why this bothers you, why it doesn't belong, and together we'll work to get this right. So, thank you for your time. Thank you to the board for your work, and thanks for, for dealing with me both yesterday and today. I think we made some headway, but a lot more work to be done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Armato. I'm gonna swing down to Mrs. Claus.
Okay.
Go ahead, Matt. Stop.
I forgot the superintendent's second comments.
I'll be brief.
Go ahead.
Which is fortuitous that I'm following Mr. Armato.
Have fun with that.
The best part of my day is not that. It's visiting classrooms. That's the best part of my day, which I got to do a lot this week despite all the hard work. I, I just wanted to respond to Mrs. DeSenza. The video that was missing has been corrected. We've identified the problem, and we're gonna hope that it doesn't happen again, but please let me know like you did yesterday. Mrs. Hollister, I understand. I applaud you. That was a very emotional thing that you came up to do, and I too heard about the two incidences. And I took note about, you know, Suicide Awareness Month, and that maybe we should be doing a little bit more. One of the things that we are doing, and I'm not, I can't remember, Mrs. Claus, if we mentioned this, I think we did, we are working, I'm pointing my badges, I've been wearing it, our ID badges for students. We're going to slowly be transitioning our students into wearing ID badges for a variety of reasons, but one of the requirements that just came across the table for us is that we are gonna be putting suicide hotline information on every, on the back of every single student ID. And that's just the tip of the iceberg. So, thank you for that. I know it wasn't easy for you to do what you did. Mrs. Downing, you talked about CPI in your report. A lot of people don't know what CPI is. That's restraint training for our power professionals, and really what that is, is how to de-escalate a student who is... a student who is having challenges. And it's, it's an amazing training. We have lots of certified trainers on staff, and it is really good that we'll be training our staff members during our PD Day. And then the last thing is, we are going to be looking into the things that are being stolen from the locker rooms. I will speak to the athletic director, Ms. Delvento, tomorrow. That's it.
Thank you. I apologize for skipping you.
That's okay.
I was looking at board committees and I'm like, right.
That's okay.
So, now we'll do Mrs. Claus.
Okay. I just want to welcome back all the students and staff. It's nice to see the school buses around town again. I wanted to give a shout out to John Smith. We did a building tour, every, we went to every single building inside and out. He did a phenomenal job, and I think the schools look wonderful, so we want him to keep it up. I just want to touch a little bit about, about the curriculum. It's been an interesting few months, to say the least, in regards to the conversations I've had when approached by the public to, about our health standards. It was really no different than the comments that we had in Listen and Learn Forum. For those who were not able to make it, the purpose of that meeting was to review the proposed health curriculum and get opinions on what you agreed with and what you did not. I too was not okay with what was given to us from the state. Your comments and passion to uphold the innocence of our children here in Lacey helped the board shape the curriculum we are voting on tonight. I can personally tell you, Ms. McAvoy and I reviewed and compared line by line, everything from 2014 to the 2020/20 standards that we have today. We had concerns, and I wish I had that with me, I didn't bring it, but we made a list, and everything on there was addressed and changed and taken out or modified. So, I'm really proud of that. Thank you, Will. And as you know, the other board members had concerns. From your input, as well as the entire board members, the curriculum committee made significant changes to that curriculum. They worked tirelessly with the admin to represent what we have today. Many items were either removed or altered, and it looks very similar to what we've been doing for the past seven years. This curriculum is very different than what we all saw a month ago, a week ago, and even today, changes were made. It was Linda, Will, Dr. Pereira, and Sal came in, and changes were made at 3:00. So, it's still being worked on. Just to remind you, the standards cannot change, but how we write our curriculum can, and that's exactly what we did. The public should know, your voices were heard. A lot of time went back and forth, conversations, we had to make sure we represented the community that we have here the best that we could. I am a firm believer, you have to do what's best for your family, and if you're still not comfortable with the curriculum, please go to the website and you can opt out. I would personally like to recognize Mrs. Downing and Mr. Zalinski for taking all of our concerns head-on. Thank you. Well done. Well, job well done. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Claus. Mr. Peterson.
I knew who he was. Thank you, Richard Wells. Sorry, guys. I'd like to thank Hannah and Jimmy as the student reps tonight. Zach Brewer, congratulations, and all the other awards that were given out tonight. I myself, I'm not the type of person to pre-type my speech like some other board members, and I just take notes till we go there, and I try and reflect back on what I jotted down. Donna, Kim, Linda, and Mr. Zalinski was a huge part in this curriculum revision. They ripped it apart, guys. I'm going to be honest with you, I was 100% no walking into this office on Tuesday afternoon, and after four hours of sitting there going through what they revised and how they changed it out was absolutely amazing, not knowing that we could do that, that I was unaware that we could do that. I was 100% no, and, and, and we'll discuss, I'll discuss later which way I vote tonight. Mr. DeSenza, I wasn't going to reply to you, but I am. You spoke about 19-page lawsuit, you spoke about four ethics cases, you spoke about New Jersey Insurance Group on $100,000 claim, you spoke about two experienced attorneys, you talked about the open machine. What you have every right to use that open machine, but what you did speak about was the fact that, I told you, if you wanted to look at an email, you were more than welcome to do it. But instead, you went through the open machine, you didn't talk about the time that our business agent had to waste on looking up a 92-page report, you didn't talk about the time that our electronics guy had to go through and Oprah all my emails, and I had a text message to show you that I said, "If you have a question, just ask me." But you didn't talk about the billing, you didn't talk about that, all that money, you talked about everything else, but not the expenses that you incurred, that the district incurred for that to happen. Thank you. Then, a couple of things. Thank you, ma'am, for speaking about that horrible tragedy up there. I was aware of that also, and it just, it rips you apart when it comes down to that, when there was no other option, but there are other options. And I feel, as a board member, I've always said to my family and friends, God forbid something happened to this district, and, and, and I wasn't, you know, on top of it or aware of it, or didn't think of something prior, it would just rip me apart. And I say to myself, "I hope." But I've learned as being the board member, hoping is not a strategy, correct? Being prepared is a strategy, ready to go. Having police officers armed in our school is a strategy that we can use to protect our children. Hope is not one. So, even her up there talking, I'm looking at the height of this roof, but I'm wondering myself, "Man, there's a second floor up top there, is there access to the roof for the kids?" Which tomorrow morning, I'm making a phone call to make sure that that's locked and that this is the tallest part of the building where they can get access to it, you know what I mean? So, thank you for bringing that up. Mr. Luca, did I say that correctly? DeLuca? Thank you. Transparency, we're two different visions here. This board has given everyone access to this curriculum, page by page, item by item, grade banning by grain banning, and give everyone access to see that. So, please, and that's just your difference, you say no transparency, I see it. We've had Listen and Learns, we address concerns. We, they, these three ladies and Mr. Zalinski worked their butts off and removed concerns that were in there. But what I don't see is somebody doing their homework and their due diligence and going to that website and going through which strategy and which SLO that they have a concern about and bringing that point to the microphone. We have people saying, "Well, I just don't like it." Well, what don't you like? Give us an actual line item and, and learning objective where that problem is, and a lot of that's been addressed. That's all, I just, it's okay, we're going to disagree, it's okay to disagree. You're saying there is a transparency, I see it as a board members, they've done everything possible to give that. I think, not my typed letter, but that's about it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Mrs. Stotfield.
Me.
All right.
First of all, I want to welcome Hannah and James to our board, and I wish them a lot of luck this year working with us. They seem very excited. They were a little nervous tonight, but they're going to be a great, a great asset to our board, so welcome. I want to thank the whole custodial and grounds crew under the direction of John Smith, who's doing an absolute, as you've heard, job, outstanding job this year as our new guy. But the grounds, the, the buildings were meticulous, and we want to thank them. I always love September when everything's shiny and clean. I want to thank all our teachers and our powers working in the schools. They were here for endless hours before school even started, getting their rooms set up. I remember as a teacher, and Donna, I'm sure you did too, just going in for days, getting ready for that first day of school, so everything was perfect for when those little ones walked in, and big ones. So, thank you very much to all the staff. The busing, I can't thank Marie, is it Maria?
Yes.
Enough for doing an outstanding job with the buses for the first day of school, and it was raining on top of it, so good job. Thank you very much. I already thanked Donna and Kim for doing, dissecting that document for us. Thank you. And again, I'm going to say what Mr. Zalinski, I believe, said earlier. If you have concerns or questions, please call the school and talk to the health teacher or the administrator of the school, and, or call central administration and voice your concerns. Let's see. I, I was reading the happenings in our, where is that document?
I'm sure you want mine, I have it out.
Yeah, thank you.
Can I see the document?
What are you going to say?
First one.
No. In Mill Pond, where is it? Give me a minute, folks. I think it was Mill Pond. Yeah, they had the PTA, they had an event called Chalk the Walk, where the, the parents brought their sidewalk chalk and their creativity as they created wonderful pieces of artwork containing positive messages for their children. I thought that was a wonderful idea, so thank you for doing that and just providing that positive aspect to school and when, you know, walking in to start your day with a nice big smile. Thank you. And what really caught me when I was reading that, the kindergarten class, there was a sign, kindergarten, welcome kindergartners, class of 2035. That really hit me. I want to congratulate our seniors of the month, our, what do you call it, vocational student of the month and the unsung hero, and my goodness, the Eagle Scouts, four of them, and there's more coming, I understand. That is so hard to achieve, so congratulations to them and best of luck. Really good job. And thank you. That's it for now.
Thank you, Mrs. Downing, Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes, good evening. The mom up there who talked about the suicide awareness, I read that story about the Middletown North girl yesterday, and I follow Mallory's Army. It's very, very sad, and I know mental health is very, very important, so I'm going to request at the next curriculum meeting that we have a report of all that we're doing for mental health in the district, so the board members know what we're doing. Okay? Thank you. And I also want to commend the staff administration, facilities worker, cafeteria workers, and the bus drivers for the smooth opening. I added up all the students we actually have here on campus in Lacey, 3,831. So, it was a lot of work getting ready for that many students. I encourage all the parents out there to join the PTAs. The PTAs or the PTC, PTO, or LPTSA are such good organizations to get to know the parents, the administrators, to fundraise, to advocate for the students. So, I just encourage everyone to help out and get involved that way. Mrs. Leiter?
Yes, I think we did all say back in November that we would be a no for the curriculum. That was a completely different health curriculum back then. We, second grade, we took out gender identity. There's, I still stand firm, there's no way we would talk about gender identity in second grade. So, yes, we did say that back in the May meeting, but I'm very confident what we have here, we worked hard, confident in all the curriculum supervisors, the teachers. When we were actually sitting in the board office, we actually called two of the health teachers and said, we gave a scenario about second grade, what are you teaching? We pulled up some standards, and the health teacher from the Forkett River School told us exactly how he was going to teach it. We talked to another health teacher and brought up another scenario. So, I'm very confident we took out mostly everything that was controversial. So, I'm very content with the curriculum as it is. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McAvoy. Vice President Scanlon.
Good evening. I, first of all, would like to congratulate the seniors of the month, Sophia Reed and Jared Danko, and the vocational senior of the month, Danielle Mateo, and of course, my favorite award, the unsung hero award, Zachary Brewer. I also, I took time along with the other board members to welcome Hannah and Jimmy as the senior board members. Something that we've been doing for quite a while, and now the state is recommending that it be done. Sometimes we don't wait for the state to tell us what to do, we do it ahead of them. We did, we toured the schools this year. It was very impressive, John Smith and his staff throughout all six schools, they were, we, we, there was nothing to criticize. I can't say that was true in the past. I remember walking along for opening with, pointing out things, you might remember that. But it was, it was very impressive. And the thing that impressed me the most was Mill Pond School, because that, a couple of years ago, we had a student who came to us with pictures and asked us to please do something to make Mill Pond look better. And when we walked around Mill Pond, it looked really good. So, it's nice to know that, that the effort was put in there and, and good start. The other interesting thing, when we walked through the schools, was the preparation of the classrooms. The teachers were really, it, it impressed me because I was a former teacher, I was put to shame. I don't think my classrooms ever looked as good as that, and I was very impressed. I'd also like to just thank Mrs. McAvoy for her efforts in getting the boys and girls soccer games at the field under the lights, and she might remember that we've been co-conspirators in a couple of things, and that was one of them. We also worked on getting the track open to the public, among other things. And then, of course, the big eight thing issue of the night was the review of the health curriculum, which we did take, take a lot of time and a lot of effort in it, and a lot of questions were asked. And one of the takeaways that I had when it came to the vocabulary, which is a sticking point for a lot of people, and I have to say, a sticking point for myself. First of all, the state gives us this outline, and from that outline, inside that scope, we created the curriculum. And in, in seventh grade or eighth grade classrooms, you don't know what a kid is going to come up and say. So, the way I viewed the curriculum, the vocabulary, and when I asked the question, I, I got an affirmation of, to my thinking that a lot of that, that vocabulary is there to protect the teacher in terms of, if a student comes up and blurts something out, like, "Oh, now what do I do?" You know, "How do I handle this? And how can, you know, am I going to be, am I going to be in trouble? Am I, it, do..." There have to, there have to be guidelines, and there are guidelines, and that's basically what it is. But basically, the work that was done took really the most objectionable things out, and I think we broke it down to something that is acceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon. Okay, so, to reiterate what a lot of people said, I want to congratulate our award winners, Jared, Sophia, Daniella, Zach. Next month, we're going to have our staff members of the month, so we're looking forward to that. One thing I do want to mention here is that we did have a moment of silence for our head custodian, John Dillon, that passed, and, and that's nice, but you know, he's, John has been a staple here for 25 years plus, and I was on the board 10, 11 years ago, and, and he put his blood, sweat, and tears into this school, and this was his place, and, and he did well with his staff, and his staff really cared for him. I know at his sudden passing, I know a lot of the staff were looking to see him when he was sickly, and they didn't have the chance to get there, and I know they were pretty saddened by that. And I just want to really recognize everything that he's done for this district in the last 25 years. A simple moment of silence is nice, but it's just not enough for what he has done for us. And I know whenever something was going on, we, you know, the, the board and the superintendent passed to say, "John, we need to get this done." It'll be done, and it was done, no questions asked. So, we're sorely going to miss him. Ms. Claus, I'm, I'm appalled. I don't know what to say. Really? Ms. Football Foundation, there's the first game tomorrow night?
Yes.
And you did not even say it. Really nice. So, tomorrow's our first home football field, our home, first home football game on our new field, the Versillo Stadium, so we invite everybody to come out and celebrate the changes that are there and cheer on our...
So we invite everybody to come out and celebrate the changes out of there and cheer on our team. So I'm hoping I can get there tomorrow. I have to move my son into his new apartment and I hope I can get back in time to participate one way or another. So come on down tomorrow night, 6 o'clock start time?
6:30.
6:30.
6:30, okay. But you can get there early and get snacks and stuff, so that's, that's the best thing. I too want to commend Mr. Smith, our facilities manager. Kudos to him and his staff. You know, this summer, they worked shorthanded. You know, there was, you know, people taking vacations and everything. I was quite surprised when I, you know, looking around and the mulch is down, the weeds are cut, the plants are blooming, I'm like, whoa, this is great. And it was really a tremendous job what they got done in the school. So I want to, you know, commend him and his staff for their work. Ms. Sylvia, you know, you did nothing here this, this week to really say, look at you, but I gotta tell you, when, you know, transferring from Pat to George to Sharon Sylvia, I was really like, oh, she's gonna, you know, if she can be able to pick up the ball and run with this. And I gotta tell you, as board president, there has not been a time where, you know, I, I'm like, can you? And it's done. And what really amazed me is here, we, we spoke about looking at saving hundreds of thousands and maybe changing our healthcare. You know, we spoke about it in, in a couple of days, it was like, we got, we got a report back. And I was like, completely amazed. And I'm like, wow, this is great. So thank you for everything that you, we haven't missed anything with you picking up the helm and running with it. You're doing a tremendous job and thank you. And thank God you'll be getting assistance soon because I know you're, you're juggling a lot of things being one person there. You know, everybody's thanked our curriculum committee, which I happen to sit on. I know everybody's giving kudos to Ms. Claus and Mrs. McAvoy and Mrs. Downing and really to everybody. You know, I, they spent a lot of time with individual board members. I spent countless hours at home, you know, jumping from computer to computer, looking at the old and looking at the new and taking notes and everything else like that. This wasn't a spur and a moment type of thing. When we say we spent hours, we spent hours. I mean, our meetings alone during the day, two, three hours, just sitting there going over. And Mr. Zalinski, Dr. Pereira, the time you spent with the board members, I know this was a busy time of the year for getting school started, but you, you made the time and I thank you for allowing the board members to come in and out at WIM to, to sit down with us to bring us up to speed with it. Mrs. DeLuca, although I caught you smiling before during the awards thing, I know you made a comment, you said you don't want your child growing up in this world. Unfortunately, we don't live in a bubble in Lacey Township. And, and I know you don't want that in Lacey Township, or your children are going to school now. But I feel as though if we didn't teach what we're gonna teach, we'd be negligent to the , to our children, letting them walk out of this school into society. And unfortunately, you know, they're blasted every day with social media. And if we think that they're not getting this stuff just at home, we're fooling ourselves. We know that things are going on and, and they're hearing it. And like this, this one lady here said, if I got my child out, they're gonna hear it on the bus, they're gonna hear it, what happened anyway. Of course it's gonna happen, all right? But by us not accepting this, we would, we would fail all our students in giving them what we think they need to, to succeed in life. And we just don't live in a Lacey Township bubble, unfortunately. I, my children are 21 and up to 26. I, I feel for people who are having children, younger children. It, it's just life in full volume every day. There's no, there's no downtime, there's no barriers, it's immediate gratification with cell phones and computers, and it is overwhelming. You know, I don't think our health curriculum would be, you know, mentally straining and taxing on our, on our children to cause them to do harm to themselves, it's just society. You know, I've said this before, we, there's no boundaries. I know in my other jobs, people email me 10, 11 o'clock at night and they expect an answer. I mean, it's crazy. You know, for, for some of us, you know, to have no hair, gray hair, we know that, you know, at the close of business on Friday, we didn't talk to anybody until Monday. And that's the way it was. We remember Sunday's businesses were closed, right? That was it. You spent family time home. Now there's no downtime. So I feel that by us not accepting this, we would just, we wouldn't be doing our due diligence and teaching our kids. Eagle Scouts, you don't realize how important they are until you're in, the projects they do, until you're in an emergent situation. An example, last month, we had, you probably seen it on the patch, we had a bunch of people in Cedar Creek get lost. We were, it was the middle of the night, it's dark, we sent rescue crews up the creek, sometimes without a paddle. They were getting up the creek in kayaks and whatever to try to find where these individuals were. And there was a Eagle Scout, and I don't know who it was, did a project by mapping Cedar Creek with, with numbers and colored posts and stuff like that. And I was able to keep in contact with my team to know where they were in a creek. And you could actually go online right now and pull up Cedar Creek and you could see the map of how this Eagle Scout mapped the creek. And it was so beneficial to finding these people, I can't even tell you, and how beneficial it was to us. So kudos to our Eagle Scouts and all they do in our community. It's really a tremendous thing. I just want to say, good luck fall sports. I heard we won a couple soccer games tonight, I'm thinking, so we're pretty excited about that. That's my thing. Volleyball, yes, and I'm looking forward to the night games at the soccer fields. I'm excited about that. And with that, we're gonna move on to new business. All right, let me find my stuff. Don't have it open. Yes? Yeah, just one. Okay, minutes. New business, A, number one, motion.
Move.
Second.
I'll second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Abstain, I was not here.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes. Number two, list of bills, motion.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes, except for bill number 9504500.
Thank you. Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes. Three and four, budget transfers, motion?
Move.
Second.
Second, Peters.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes. Number five, 1701 reporting for July, motion?
Move.
I'll second.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes. Number six through 14, finance, motion?
I'll make that motion.
I will second it.
Discussion.
Yes. How much longer are the SRACs gonna be available to sell?
See, it's funny you thought about it, because I was thinking about it. I was just gonna make a comment. So, three more years.
We have three more years of getting that money back.
Right. And I said this before, so the finance committee, we've already started working on, we have to make a decision as a board whether or not we're going to be doing, leaving them as is, which we get nothing but energy assistance, no money, leasing or buying. And the thing is, we're gonna need new roofs too, so.
Right, so if we're gonna do the roofs, right.
Right. There's something that the finance committee's gonna start working on, we need to start soon on that.
Thank you.
All right. And if people don't take notice of that, you know, when we sell our SRACs, we probably do it about, what, $400,000 a year in, in energy, in selling our, our SRACs? And the SRACs are the credits that we get off our energy for every thousand kilowatts is one SRAC and we sell them. Okay, we had our motion.
I have a question or concern on item number 12 in use of facilities. There's quite a few dates missing still for Lacey Lions basketball games and practice. Can we move that to next month until we get accurate times and dates for, for this organization?
So I'm sorry, Mr. Armato, I couldn't hear you. Say again.
Lacey Lions basketball games, we have some dates that are significant dates that are missing for games and practice, and I wanted to know if we could move that to next month until this is accurately updated? Or would we be able to vote on it this month and then whatever is revised, we can vote on it next month if we can get that? Is that how it works?
Did you want to say something? Go ahead.
I would say yes, that we'd be able to vote on it tonight and then revise it as needed.
I agree. And the way it's written on the agenda, it looks like it approves all dates between December 3rd and March 18th, and then you could clarify at a subsequent meeting.
Okay. So from that point then, I'm good. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Armato?
I'm gonna abstain from item number 12 for Lacey Recreation, Lacey Lions Basketball Games and Practices, but good with everything else.
Thank you. Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes. 15 through 16, tuition, motion?
Move.
Second, Peters.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes. 17 through 18, policies and regulations, motion?
17, you don't need to vote, it's just the first reading, so policies as stated.
Okay.
And 18 is a second read for policies.
Move 18.
I'll second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Armato?
Yes.
Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes. 19 through 22, other items?
Move.
I'll second.
Discussion.
I do have a discussion.
Go ahead.
Just for clarification, please, on item number 22, where we're gonna look at curriculum approval, is this approval, from what I understand, is this approval for the entire curriculum? It's not broken down?
Correct.
So if I, I can't say I approve everything but the health curriculum?
You can. Yeah, you can, that's, that's fine.
I could?
Yeah.
I think that's legally permissible and Ms. Sylvia can note that in the minutes.
Okay, very good. Thanks.
Any other discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Armato?
With respect to item number 22, I, I will approve everything except the health curriculum. Although we've gone a long way in making this better, I still think we can do a better job, so until this is, I, nothing's ever perfect, but until it is at least as perfect as we can get it, I'm gonna not approve that portion of it.
Thank you. Mrs. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
I'm not gonna say it's against my better judgment, but I'm gonna say yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Scanlon?
Yes.
Mr. Polino?
Yes. Let's move on to B, donations, motion?
Move the donations.
Second. Second?
Second.
Okay, thank you.